We're going to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's kind of an exciting night. You're not all mad at me, so this is, this is good. So, yeah. So we're going to call the meeting to order and we'll move on to roll call.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Lucely. We have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you. And we're going to go on to the Indigenous land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna bag. The town of Petroya is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the lands and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Great, thank you. Moving on to number five, if anyone has a conflict of interest, declare it at the time or and file the paperwork with the clerk. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Before we do that, I am going to change the agenda briefly. We're going to move up our presentations so everyone doesn't have to sit through our council meetings. So we'll move to the beginning. So. Can I have a mover and a second or Counselor Clark, Counselor Welsh, with that amendment?
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt as presented the agenda of the April 14th, 2025 regular session of council.
Great. All those in favor? And that carries. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silent reflection. If everyone could just stand quietly. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to move up a couple of presentations. For me?
Minutes, sir.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I skipped one. We have two sets of minutes.
One set.
That's good. They look like two. We have one set of minutes from our regular meeting in March 2025. Can I have a mover and a second or Counselor Hyatt, Counselor Patel?
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on March 24th, 2025.
Great. All those in favor? Great. Okay, now we're good to move on. So at this time, we want to acknowledge two of our hockey teams. Betroya Oilers U-18 B1, incredible season they had comprised of veterans sprinkled with some first and second year players. Early in the season, the Oilers won every tournament they entered, including the Earl Treville Silver Stick on hometown ice. They advanced to the North American Silver Stick Championship in Forest this past January, bringing home what we're here tonight to recognize them for the International Silver Stick Championship. Their Shamrock League Championship qualified them for the OMHA Tournament in Holden Hills. It truly seems to have, it seems, yeah. The team truly seems to have had a fairy tale season. And we're all proud of each one of you and how you represented Betroya. Tonight, we want to recognize the heart, skill, determination of each player that made it to International Silver Stick Championship. I'd ask the players, the coaches, bench staff to come forward and be recognized. I'm going to, at this time, I'm going to ask Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt and Director Bullock. And this is for the U-18. We're going to call out your names. And if you want to come up and receive your certificate, and then we're going to just ask you to stand at the front here and we're going to take a photo, group photo. I'll turn it over to Director Bullock.
So we're going to start with Tate Stonehouse.
A lot of things.
Daniel Sanderson. Hayden Edward. Rowan Douglas. Ryder Stokes. Parker Needham. Kristen McKeen. Adam Balaket. Hunter King. Lucas Johnson.
It's okay, boys, to be in front of each other.
Isaac Fisher.
Yeah.
I'll have to make a second row.
Yeah. It's all right, you can go into the second row, boys.
Hoffman.
Second row isn't a thing.
Lake Tengrak. Wesley St. Pierre. Jase Hall. Coaching and bench staff, Paul Bolton. Jason Reedhead.
Hey, Paul, I think you had to stand in the front row.
And stand on the bench.
We can see you back there.
Feel free to stand on the bench.
Get Paul up on that. Stand on that.
Just congratulations on both of them.
Thank you. I don't know if the coach wants to say a couple of words or Paul? No, I didn't think. I did that on purpose because he went to the back row. So again, thank you. You represented Betroya very well. Congratulations, guys. So we're going to go on to the Betroya Oilers U-13 B1. A small but mighty bench. I didn't write this. They wrote it for me. So a small but mighty bench with 10 skaters and one goalie and a lot of blonde hair. I was looking for all the parents to see whose kids these were. Definitely a lot of blonde hair. Have accomplished big things this season, including qualifying OMHA Championship Tournament through a big series win through South Huron, through the South Huron. Unfortunately, a red hat was not in the cards. I also hear it was quite a win in Buffalo. However, making it to OMHA Weekend was an accomplishment. We are here tonight to recognize, to here tonight to recognize is the Silver Stick Journey of this team. The past December, winning the Roy Haley Memorial Regional Silver Stick Tournament and qualifying to complete entry into the International Silver Stick Tournament held in Forest. On Sunday, January 26th, this team showed their skill and grit with a shutout win 5-0 against Concannon to bring home the International Silver Stick. Continuing with the lore of Betroya hockey and a special breed of players is definitely happening here. I'd like to ask Coach St. Pierre and his players and bench staff to come forward. And again, Director Bullock, you can read through them.
Smith. Liam Campbell. James Ennett. Bryson Bell.
Congratulations.
Gavin Moore.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Xavier St. Pierre. Carolyn McCallum.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ben Mieskens.
Congratulations.
Reese Nestle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Carter Duff. William Edgar.
Congratulations.
Gavin Helps.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And going on to our coaching and bench staff, Randy Mieskens.
One is.
Jerry St. Pierre. Chris Seder.
Congratulations. Right. Let's see them together, fellows.
Make two rows, boys.
They've done this before.
I was going to say, take an E.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
St. Pierre, did you want to say anything? Okay, yeah, yeah. I didn't want to pick on one or the other. Again, congratulations, guys. You really represented Betroya well and Betroya hockey. So at this time, anyone that wants to go is free to go. But, yeah, yeah. No, no, staff has to stay. So thank you very much, guys, for coming.
I mean, holy smart. Awesome. I remember those days. They were pretty awesome.
I got to find Brad's.
It's a very small crowd after we go.
Yeah. Feast of famine.
Where did you do his round table? Where did you send it?
I got it. And there was none.
Well, that changed the audience levels. We even got your seat now, so. Keep it down, Heather. Good to see you back. They're moving along. Let's give them a minute here. I think there's a few kids that didn't follow the blonde hair. Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, round table announcements. I guess we'll start with Counselor Clark.
I don't think I have anything.
Counselor Welsh?
Um, just good news. In spite of everything that's happened, Petroya Discovery will be open for the 2025 season, the first weekend of June.
Counselor O'Hara.
I have nothing.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you. Through you, just that the yes to their youth advisory slash new Park and Rec Committee has officially launched our second opportunity for, to engage the youth in our community and find a voice and a place for all of them to attend. And we're hoping for great success and great attendance as they move forward with their event.
Great. That's great. Counselor Hyatt?
Nothing to share. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Pearson to go over, the mayor had a few items.
Certainly.
That he wanted mentioned.
So this is from Mayor Lucely, who provides his regrets this evening, but did pass along some of his engagements over the past two weeks. Attended the Business to Business Resource Night at the Four Point Sheridan Hotel on Tuesday, March 25th. It was a good event with a large turnout and was very informative. Attended the Lampton College Announcement for their new strategic plan for 2025 through to 2029 at the Nova Chemical Health and Research Center on Thursday, March 27th. It was done in a very professional manner with a good turnout and program. Took part in the Lampton County Council Meeting on Thursday, April 3rd, and will continue to keep council informed. Attended a full house and honored the Petroya Volunteers at the Petroya Legion Branch 216 on Thursday, April the 4th, 2004, marked a historic year in the oil town where the celebrations were seemingly endless and the community spirit was at all ti- at an all time high. I also stated that volunteerism is one of the most important factors in the community building, and Petroya is among the most fortunate for the number of volunteers and the number of hours that those people share with our community. In recognition of the Volunteer of the Year for 2024, I selected the Petroya 150 Committee, a group of local people that worked for five years to create the 2024 celebrations and for their work throughout 2024. This was money well spent. I recognized each committee member individually and members of the Petroya staff involved and presented them each with a plaque and flowers. Deputy Mayor Field and Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, also spoke and thanked the volunteers. Counselor Clark also attended and performed the draw for the 150 coin sets. Counselor O'Hara was also in attendance. That was appointed to the 150 Committee since the beginning five years ago as the appointment of council. Mrs. Denise Thibault, Chairperson for the 150 Committee, also spoke and thanked the committee and the residents for their support. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication, who is the emcee, and her staff, and Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities, for all of their work. The evening was great and enjoyed by all. Attended and welcomed Mr. Matt Pesut, owner of Team Outfitters, on behalf of council and staff to the Town of Petroya on Saturday, April the 12th. Deputy Mayor Field and Mrs. Denise Thibault, Downtown Business Liaison, also took part. The event included refreshments and snacks for all those in attendance. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication, for all of her help.
Great, thank you. A couple of items. I attended the Lampton County Conservation Dinner. They call it the Birds and the Bees Dinner with Counselor Clark. And I attended the store opening and congratulations to Matt and his team. The store looks excellent. All those Betroya sweatshirts and stuff in there. It's a great addition to our downtown. The volunteer dinner was outstanding. I've been to a lot of the dinners and, you know, having the Legion actually packed with people. I did make a commitment that I'm going to volunteer at the VPP this year, and I want Larissa to hold me to that. So. Metaview, I attended, they had a small homes information. They're going to be putting a, an Alzheimer's dementia ward in there, you know, the small house concepts. It's very interesting and it's not just the first in this area, it's the first in Ontario for this. And I think it's going to really bring something to people with Alzheimer's and dementia. It brings their families in, it brings them, gets them involved still. So it's very exciting what they're doing out there. So that's all I had. Move on to appointed reps for each committee. We have minutes for the Heritage Committee, and that's Counselor Welsh, Counselor O'Hara. Did one of you guys want to, Counselor Welsh?
Do you want to move or second?
Oh, you, yeah, sure, that'd be moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor O'Hara, and go ahead, Counselor Welsh.
Just for the April meeting, we didn't have quorum, so we didn't really have a meeting. At the March meeting, significant, we changed the deadline for the facade grant program to June the 30th so that our people are not waiting until the end of summer to learn whether they've been successful in getting a grant. And it was also determined that the retaining wall at the end of Greenfield Street, we were contacted by a resident, and it does in fact belong to the Town of Petroya, and the resident was concerned with all the growth of trees and shrubs that it was being compromised. So anyway, the town is having a look at that now to see what we can do to get it fixed up.
Excellent. Great. Any questions regarding the update or the minutes? All those in favor? And that passes. And moving on to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and that's Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. When do you want to move? Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. And which Counselor Hyatt is going to speak?
A pretty good update meeting from all the general events that are happening around the town. I guess kind of got some of the two highlights, I guess, for me is, one, we have picked a new official logo for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, which I think is pretty exciting. I guess there's been some comments that it's not easy to identify volunteers that are in Parks and Rec Committee when they're out helping out and supporting the event. So I think it should help identify who those people are, which is, which is pretty nice. Number two, we also held our ballot for selecting the prayed theme for the Christmas event. And I don't know if that becomes an official release, so I will not share in case it is. I'm not sure. But we did pick a theme, so maybe at a later date that will be released.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions around those minutes or all those in favor? And moving on to correspondence, we have A to D. What would you like to go to receive and file? Counselor Clark and seconded by Counselor Hyatt. If anybody wants anything out of them or no? Any questions from that? Those in favor? And that's moved. Moving on to correspondence required a motion. We have none. Delegation presentation. We have a delegation. Mr. John, is it Crent?
I believe so.
Crent, okay. If you wanted to come forward, state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes, sir.
I'm John. I live at 4140 Robert, just across the grocery store there. So I'm assuming you all got my email, or at least the information's pretty detailed. Apologies if it was a little bit aggressive at different points. Very stressful week. I apologize for that. Long story short, I want to just move for kind of nullifying this one since I was already in the process of handling these problems. And it just feels a little bit silly to be told to pay money to do something you're already doing. That's all.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that forward. One of the things that we have in our bylaw is a cost recovery process, and that is part of our bylaw. I guess I, does anyone have any questions regarding that?
How much is the invoice that we're
Almost $200 bucks.
We're looking at, and that's for, I didn't see the actual invoice.
Someone giving me a piece of paper telling me to fix the fence, which I'm already in the process of doing, and clean the property up, which I've been doing since I moved in and spent significant money on. So this little bit, not a lot, but every little bit helps to keep moving it forwards that it can be.
Yeah, it looks like a pretty extensive list of stuff that you were working on.
Yeah, I've already put in a lot in the last few months, too, like.
And I think some of those conditions have probably been with that property probably prior to your ownership, like you recently moved in?
I moved in in June, yeah. So.
Okay, I'll look to.
And I'll make a motion to waive the fees for this invoice.
Is there a second or? Counselor Welsh, discussion on that?
Yeah, just from the list that he shared, I think is a pretty extensive list of items that he's working on. And I think maybe a lot of them have been the longstanding items that prior to him moving into the home. So I think it would be applicable that we could waive these fees in support of all the activities he's working on to already improve his residence in his new home. So.
Counselor Patel?
Hi, through you, just, you know, my thoughts. I certainly have no problem suspending it, and if there's a deadline in place or a date in which that these recommendations and repairs are to be done, that they be more time sensitive, given the season, that there be an allowance to suspend that, to give them time to finish this lengthy list. I think that that would be fair.
Through your worship, that extension actually has already been provided by the bylaw enforcement officer. We work very closely, and those extensions are something she does consider and provide. So I can confirm that an extension has been provided.
Grateful because it's like almost close to $100,000 worth of work to be done, which I don't know, anyone has that kind of money in their account. So not something that I can do in a month, you know?
Anyone else have any?
What, I'm sorry, what was the extension to?
I wasn't given a date. I was just told sometime in summer.
Yeah, the bylaw enforcement is working and she'll monitor as they connect, and then they'll, they'll continue with a proper deadline date as based on his productivity. So I don't want to put words into Jessica's mouth.
Yeah, but there's some flexibility.
She, and she's been working with Mr. Crent, yes, yeah.
And I just, just as a comment before, if anybody else, we need to be a little caution to, we're going to set precedence by doing this and not talking, you know? But I just want to remind everyone of that as well. That's my only concern is we put this bylaw in place with a plan to recoup it. And that's how we budget it. And I just wanted to remind, that's just my.
Add to that, to your worship. As work progresses and there are inquiries on the file, there are expenses that will be charged to that file that will also be charged out. That is the current model that council has provided to staff.
Yeah, Counselor Clark?
So just for clarity, for the resident and for us, the fee that he's been charged isn't because he didn't make the repairs. The fee is because the bylaw enforcement had to attend and prepare the documents that show his requirement to make the changes.
Correct. We have a cost recovery model that we agreed to, that we put in place. So any time spent by the So any time spent by the county.
So you're not being penalized because the work hasn't been done, it's because it's to pay the, to cover the cost for the bylaw people.
Correct.
And the, and the work that they do to prepare the documents.
Correct.
And while you're just waiting, your worship, can I ask a point of clarification? Could you give them out of the, the invoice, sorry, I just don't have that handy.
Uh, 195 and 84 cents.
Thank you.
Councillor Welsh.
Well, I guess my concern is here, this, this person obviously moved into an existing situation as Councillor Hyatt had said. So they aren't, not really through any fault of their own that they have this situation at, at their property. That's correct. This was like, yes.
Thought that we found out or something.
So if this was like a proactive enforcement or if it was a complaint-driven enforcement, do we know specifically?
Could get that from, from Jessica, I don't have that at my, my disposal.
Councillor Patel.
So is it fair for tonight's ruling to say that we can suspend it to collect more information until next council? So that we can find out and allow, say, a checklist of what requirements were asked and what has already been accomplished to determine it? Can we do that to gather more information?
So it is not to do, and just from my understanding, it's not to do with anything that has been actioned. This is just her coming out, doing the initial.
Correct.
Yeah, this is purely being told to make the changes, which if, if, you know, I've been there for a while, 100% I get it. But because I was already in the process of doing those changes, that's the reason I requested for.
What is the type, oh, sorry, go ahead, not you.
Oh, that, that's the only reason I'm requesting it, because it's kind of like if you're doing the dishes and someone comes up to you and says, hey, can you do the dishes? But you're already doing them. It just feels a little silly in that regards. Like, I understand they still have to do work and everything as well, and I understand that. But it, it just seems in this particular case, like if I wasn't doing anything, I would have no issues whatsoever. But I'd already put in thousands of dollars to do the repairs that were requested before I was told to make the repairs, basically.
Honestly, that's all. I'm just, you said you moved in in June? And then what's the dates on?
Uh, so this showed up on. Am I blind? Where's the? So the billing date shows March 17th and I was, which I think has nothing to do with that. Yeah, because I know that the original date that I was given on the other packet said all remedies to be done by like March 5th, which the ground's frozen, so you couldn't, I couldn't have done them anyway. And it was on the weekend, the one weekend where I was actually away, it was when everything got dropped off. So I don't, I can go look at my calendar and check what date that was, but it would have been when I was in the city. But it was sometime in the middle of winter, snow.
And just as a point of clarification, what you're asking is for this initial invoice to be waived. And as it's pointed out, there could be other invoices throughout this process that could be coming as well. So are you talking about those or are you talking about just?
Uh, for me, the request has been for this invoice, so.
This is the only one I'm worried about. All of the other stuff, like the county have already filed things for variances and everything else so far. I'm in that process already for a number of things, so it's, no problem with that, it's literally just this one.
So we have a motion, we have a secondaire, any other discussion? Those in favor of waiving the fees? Uh, those opposed? And that passes. All right, thank you for coming. And now we have a presentation from Slep. Chantel.
Patel and Matthew.
And Matthew. Excellent.
Perfect. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. When we walked in, I thought everyone was here to hear a.
There for you. Tell everyone there was a packed house, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just to prove it.
Yeah, I hope we didn't drive them away, but thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, uh, to hear myself and Chantel. Give a little bit of an update and information on the happenings through the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership as it relates to the Town of Petrolia, the County of Lampton, the core pillars of the organization and how it's ultimately impacts the residents of the area. So if I may move to the next slide, and I'll move through these first few relatively quickly, of course, just to give everybody a little bit of an update. The mission of the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership is to advance economic growth and opportunity in the Sarnia Lampton area. We do so through leadership, through partnership, through collaboration and providing strategic direction. Ultimately, we want to see the Sarnia Lampton area be a premier location in Canada for companies to and residents to live, work, invest. If I may move to the next slide, what I'll work through, through this presentation is the seven core elements of the organization that's, that are represented within our five-year strategic plan. That strategic plan came into effect last year. All of these are here to impact upon businesses, entrepreneurs, residents, workforce and related, related items. So we'll get into depth on these a little bit as I work through. The next slide, please. Of course, we do have a full-time staff within the organization. Right now it's nine who are within the office. I do encourage everybody on council to get to know the individuals on staff where, where at all possible. Know how they serve the municipality, how they serve the county, ultimately, how they can be leveraged as resources for the, for the good of the economy locally. Uh, next slide there. Of course, everything we do is in some way in collaboration with partners. Whether those are local partners, whether those are external partners, the reality is partner is in our name. And our goal is either to drive initiatives as the lead in conjunction with partners or to support the partners within the economic development ecosystem of Sarnia Lampton for the betterment of the community. So this is inter-inclusive, but certainly a representation of many of the groups that we work with, any given year, any given time. My next slide, please. I, I, as we enter pillar one of the organization, I, brand and marketing. Our, our job is to let people know about Sarnia Lampton. But it's also to let people know about the things that the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership is doing to benefit the community, to benefit businesses. Last year, we implemented a newsletter that hadn't been in effect for a couple of years. Do encourage everybody on council to subscribe to that newsletter to stay informed. What programming's ongoing, what programs are coming, I, how, how can you support or participate in the activities of the organization? It, it does note also, we had undergone a website redesign, it was the first time in a decade that we've updated the Slep website. Actually, it came live today, so when we say it's live now, we truly mean it, just over the last couple of hours. And I think it's going to do an excellent job of informing the, informing the community, but driving economic opportunity to the area as well. As we look to our planned activities for 2025, we'll be developing out a series of videos linked to our core economic sectors, trying to drive new investment to the area, really inform of what that opportunity is to see new companies from extra, outside of the area, come make investments, create jobs. Uh, next slide if I may. Uh, the second pillar is, oh, actually, sorry, link to that first pillar, it feeds an advocacy. And we've really focused heavily on advocating for items that alleviate concerns or create economic opportunity for the Sarnia Lampton area, for our communities, for our workers in the area. When we look at last year, we advocated very heavily for infrastructure and infrastructure-related projects. For items that could retain existing business, for example, things like geological carbon sequestration or the carbon tax reallocation, where we've seen some success. Transportation has been very important and will continue to be through 2025. And as we look at some of the successes and where municipalities can really leverage us, a, a great example is last year, we worked very closely with St. Clair Township for them to be able to access about $35 million in funding for a wastewater treatment facility that will enable housing development, but also enable significant industrial opportunity in the area. As we look towards 2025, many of the things we'll advocate for will continue to be the same. But one of the big ones, of course, is everything related to international relations, international trade, working with our provincial and federal governments so that they know the impacts of their decisions on local businesses. Uh, next slide if I may. As it relates to workforce, we've got a variety of programs that have come about over the last couple of years, especially last year, and some that are currently active that, that I, I wanted to inform about. Just this year, we initiated the Ontario Immigrant Nominee Program, associated with the Regional Economic Development through Immigration program. And what this is going to do is leverage a federal project utilizing mechanisms provincially to drive new immigrants to the Sarnia Lampton area to fill critical workforce gaps within hard-to-fill job positions. So this is something where we can bring in up to 200 individuals to fill those areas where the existing labor force currently does not exist. Additionally, we've got a newcomer support and entrepreneurship program, which is just initiated last week. We actually haven't even had a formal press release about this, so you'll, you'll see it over the coming weeks. But it'll bring in some mentorship programs, newcomer networking events, trying to bring in new individuals to Lampton County. Resume coaching, intercultural competency training, and most significantly, newcomer entrepreneurship programming. So trying to drive new small businesses to the area. Additionally, programs to support existing small business in the area or small business and potential workforce into those small businesses include the Explore, Explore Talent Portal and the Apprenticeship Job Match Program, which can be leveraged by those who are looking for local job opportunities. If I may move to the next slide, please. A critical aspect, of course, of the economic partnership is investment attraction. And so as an organization, we focus on a variety of established sectors in the Sarnia Lampton area and trying to drive new investment into them. So of course, manufacturing and advanced manufacturing, our large chemical and energy, energy industries, related sustainable chemistry, so what feeds into clean, green, sustainable bio-industrial opportunity, for example. And trying to drive new opportunity linked to value-added agriculture and food development. But also, we focus on trying to drive new emerging sectors to the area. And so what that sees is opportunities linked to low-carbon hydrogen and how that can impact upon a new capital investment and job creation. The EV and battery supply chain, as well as net-zero technologies. And I'll say, while many of these fit within our strategic plans, international trade will impact upon our ability to be successful on a few of these. Notably, let's say, the EV and battery supply chain, where we have some companies in the, in the pipeline right now. As noted by some of the companies on the pie chart there, but we've seen a relative slowdown, especially recognizing the global markets that are, that exist there. With everything that's happening, one thing that I did want to pass along is that we continue to see new investment opportunity. Not everything is meant to be grim right now. We see companies that are diversifying their value chains. They're moving things from, let's say, the United States to, to Canada to see how can they better benefit their historic industries. And we will see new capital investment and job creation in Sarnia Lampton as a result of what's going on internationally right now. If I may move to the next slide. But of course, we need to be well aware of how the, how the ongoing tariff situation, international trade situation are impacting the ability for Sarnia Lampton to be successful, not just in terms of driving new investment and job creation, but also to retain our existing businesses. And these are businesses large and small. We've partnered with a bunch of players within the economic development ecosystem through the Lampton Business Collaborative to put forward a variety of different programs where companies, business owners, entrepreneurs, various industry can be informed of what resources, what programming, what incentives are available to them to alleviate concerns or access opportunity as it relates to this ongoing situation. But also, coming up in May, we've got a tariff international trade forum where we're seeking to let the voices be heard from business. What is impacting them? What do they need? What needs to be created at a local level so that they can be, so that those concerns can be alleviated so that we can put the resources in place to drive opportunity to the area. And we're looking forward to hopefully having a well-attended event there. I'll pass it over to Chantel briefly here.
Let's trade you notes here, Matthew. Hi, everyone. My name is Chantel Core and I'm an Economic Development Officer with the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership. In my role, I have the pleasure of working with our 10 rural municipalities on economic development programming in your communities. In addition to that, I also get to work with the business community that exists here in Lampton County. And I do that through what we call business retention and expansion visits. In essence, I go out and I build relationships with our existing business community to understand what challenges they're facing and what opportunities for growth they have, so that we can connect them to the different resources that exist. So we do a number of initiatives in effort to find business owners and connect with them in addition to our ongoing phone and email outreach to get to know them and get in to see them. So we take a collaborative approach, often working with the Sarnia Lampton Industrial Alliance, BDC and the ministry. We conduct business coffee chats across our rural communities in an effort to create both networking opportunities, but also create a soft opportunity for businesses to come out and just learn a little bit more about the ecosystem that exists to support them before they open their doors and welcome us in for that one-on-one conversation. We host events in partnership with our Business Enterprise Center, which I'm going to tell you a little bit more about. And ultimately, we're looking to support local business growth and ensure that they feel supported in the work that they do. One of the other key elements of our business retention and expansion program is helping companies both find resources to help them grow, such as grant applications or various funding applications from both provincial and federal levels of government. And it's important that we relay the message to business owners that we are here to support them in those processes. So we often liaise between the people who manage those programs to make sure that the businesses in Lampton County who are interested in them understand what it takes to actually submit an application, whether they're a good fit, sometimes help, sometimes help time their program or their project with those programs as well and kind of support them through those processes. And you'll see here on the slide, we have an example of that where we worked with Cabot for a major expansion. If you can go to the next slide, thank you. We have a small business enterprise center that is part of a network of 54 across the province of Ontario. And while it is housed within the business or within the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership, it receives provincial funding to operate in addition to funding from the County of Lampton. The purpose of the Business Enterprise Center is to support entrepreneurs and early-stage businesses with one-on-one business counseling, a variety of workshops and training sessions meant to guide them through the process of what it takes to start and run a successful business. We do also have a few grants associated with the Business Enterprise Center that I'm going to tell you a little bit more about on the next slide. The first is our Starter Company Plus program. Starter Company Plus is a $5,000 government grant program to help new or existing businesses grow. So we provide training, a peer-to-peer mentoring support through that program, as well as business plan coaching along the way. That program is well utilized in the County of Lampton, and we have funding this year for 10 businesses. Applications opened in March, so we are actively engaging with people who want to pursue that opportunity. I also want to highlight that in 2024, the Petrolia Primary School was one of the recipients of that grant. Next slide, please. We also have our Summer Company Program for youth, and when we had a full house here, I got really excited to talk about that program. So for those who are online and, and still engaged, Summer Company is a really great program. It is designed to provide an experiential learning opportunity for youth between the ages of 15 and 29 to start and run their own business for the summer. The program is not meant to take students and turn them into full-time entrepreneurs. It's meant to give them a experience, they can continue that business, of course, but meant to give them an experience so that when they go on complete education, get some experience in the workforce, they have the confidence to pursue entrepreneurship when they have another great idea. And through that program, students can. And through that program, students can get a $3,000 government grant to help them with their startup costs. And half of that is for them as essentially a reward for taking the the risk of starting a business. And then through that program, they also receive mentoring and training and support with our small business coaches. So it's a great program. We have space for six youth this summer and applications are currently open. I'm gonna just pass it back to Matthew.
I promise we're wrapping up. So the the final pillar of the organization, innovation and market readiness. And this is something that we're seeking to have an in depth conversation at any point in time with every municipality across Lampton County. And especially on the market readiness side of things. The reality is, across Lampton County, we have a real shortage of investment ready industrial land. While there are a couple municipalities that presently own public industrial properties and business parks, those properties themselves are not fully investment ready at this point in time. And one of the things we're trying to encourage is municipalities to consider what opportunities may may there be for their municipality to pursue market readiness. The reality is, companies don't often come to us and say, we're only looking at petroleum. We're only looking at Lampton County. Most of the time, they're coming saying, we're looking at southwestern Ontario. We're looking at Ontario. We're looking at North America. We're going to go to the location where we have the least amount of uncertainty and the greatest amount of land readiness and industrial preparedness. And so just one of the takeaways is that there are opportunities for all municipalities across Lampton County, whether it's their own publicly available land or whether it's working with landowners, building owners to bring their land and buildings to heightened states of industrial or market readiness. And I will say, Petroleum right now has the most available industrial buildings of anywhere in Lampton County. And this actually is a tremendous opportunity because it's the only location that has more than one building larger than 20,000 square feet that's actively available to draw investment to. So there there is an opportunity when it comes to the town here. But there is a greater opportunity as well. And I just want to make sure we're conveying the message that to drive this investment that is looking at Lampton County, that is looking at Ontario. We need to consider how do we invest in ourselves so that people can invest in us. And I'll close off there. Certainly happy to answer any questions where we may be.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Matthew and Chantel. Any questions?
That's all right. Thank you for the presentation through you. So I think there's been a few times up here at the council table where, you know, we've always been talking about, we want to add more homes. We want to build. We want to we want to grow the town of Petroya. I don't know how many subdivisions it is or how many homes, 700 homes or something along those lines. But really, what is what are the opportunities that we're presenting from an economic standpoint that's saying, no, let's bring these people to Petroya and provide jobs and opportunities for them. So it sounds like, you know, the last pillar that you really talked about can really help us focus on that. But what do we need to do from a connection standpoint between us as the municipality and yourselves to really make that happen?
Absolutely. So the the joy is that our economic development team is here to work with the municipality to identify the land, the land readiness opportunities that do exist. So whether that's public land, whether that's working with private landowners, to be able to provide the information that says, here's what you need to do to become market ready. Here's programs that are available to assist in becoming market ready. Here's the opportunity that's looking at Sarnia Lampton. Here's what you need to consider in making yourself prepared to accommodate that development. Those are conversations we're very happy to have with municipal staff, with councils, with landowners, be they public or private.
Is there like an existing database that you're saying this is what Petroya has to offer?
Actually, yes. So through our new website, I encourage everybody to take a look at the area on available land. Through that, it brings together all properties that are presently being marketed as being available. Anything that isn't coming through the local realtors. If we are aware of it through the municipality, through the landowner, we can create a profile for those individual properties. And what this means is, we are aware of what's actively available, but those who may be proactively searching themselves through our website can also be aware of what's available there.
Thank you.
I have a question. You made reference to St. Clair Township, their $34 million or 30, whatever the amount was that they got for their wastewater treatment. You said you aided them in sourcing. Can you elaborate on what?
Absolutely. Very, very heavy advocacy through the provincial government, various ministries associated with infrastructure, certainly where we could leverage the economic, the Ministry of Economic Development to show the need for this infrastructure. And additionally, through sort of arms length entities like Invest Ontario, where they see the industrial opportunity in St. Clair Township and the need for such critical infrastructures to be invested in to be market ready to drive the investment opportunity there. And so while the program itself was through the Housing Enabling Fund, we were able to leverage other avenues to show the critical need for such investment.
And have you done that with other municipalities as well that are?
It's something we're actively encouraging right now. But when it comes to infrastructure, it is something where we do seek to work with municipalities. I'll give the example of actively working with Warwick Township right now around natural gas availability to the Village of Warwick, for example, and some of the rural areas of that municipality that would drive opportunities linked to homes and business creation.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry, you didn't have a full room to, but I know Heather got everything down, so.
He said there'd be a certificate for it.
Oh, yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. And we'll give the same thing that you guys don't have to stay if you don't.
Adrian knows that.
He's already halfway out the door. Great. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to number 14, Community Announcement, Recognition and Awards. So we pulled those two out. So we have our community announcements. Now have a mover and a second or to councillor Clark and councillor Hyatt.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive as information only, the April 14th, 2025 community announcements as presented.
Would you like to add anything, Larissa?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
And our long service award, Jason wasn't able to attend tonight, so I know he will be getting that. First opportunity for the public to, oh, here we go. Now, are you supposed to be speaking? Okay.
It's okay. I'll be brief. How does that sound? Actually, I wanted to take this opportunity to invite the community to an all candidates meeting. It's April the 27th, 21st, sorry, at 7:00 PM at the Petroya Legion. It's going to be moderated by Kevin Shaw, who you all know, who was a former political candidate and a high school teacher. And apparently, all of the candidates are going to be there, so. And one other little bit of good news, it was at 7:00 PM. And one other little bit of good news, this weekend, the Independent was received first prize for the 150 newspaper.
Great. Wow. It's amazing.
Can you elaborate with the topic, what the actual subject was?
Is it the whole paper?
Special, is that what the the award is, a recognition of the special edition?
I just don't want to. It was called the special. It was for special sections.
Special sections.
And I'm going to brag that the the judge said it was the obvious winner in the category, so.
Great work. Good work. And I don't see anyone else jumping up. Record, moving on to 16. Reports with a motion required, administration. We have a report from the manager of, there's a lot of titles for you.
It's not me, that's her.
Legislative Services, oh, sorry, Deputy Clerk, Human Resources.
You can just leave it at that. Be cool with that.
All right. Do I have a mover and a second or to put it on floor, councillor Hyatt, councillor Welsh? Any discussion?
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the manager of Legislative Services, Deputy Clerk and Human Resources Manager Jessica Smith dated April 14th, 2025, regarding the April 2025 Committee of Adjustment Meeting.
Jessica, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I do not. Thank you.
Excellent. All those in favor? And it passes. And we're moving on to two, a report from Andy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk, Deputy Operations for the County West Nile annual authorization. And a mover and a second for that, councillor Welsh and councillor Clark. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to approve the Lampton County Board of Health proceeding with the Net West Nile Larva Siding Program in Petroya for 2025, and that Andy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk and Deputy Operations be authorized to sign the County of Lampton Authorization Request.
Great. All those in favor? And moving on to finance, report from Annette Strand, Deputy Treasurer, Finance. And it's the Heritage Tax Rebate 2025. And mover and a secondary councillor Clark, councillor Hyatt. Any discussion?
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Deputy Treasurer Finance Manager dated April 14th, 2025, regarding the 2024 Heritage Tax Rebates.
All those in favor? And it passes. A report from Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, dated April 14th, County Council Endorsement of the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund Grant. Mover and a secondary councillor Clark, councillor Welsh.
That is for the council of the town of Petroya to endorse the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 14th of April 2005, 2025, regarding approval of our Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund Capital Grant and that endorsed the CHIF grant approval to facilitate creation of our transfer payment agreement, which will be sent to us by the federal government.
Any discussion? Councillor.
Question. So this is for the water main upsizing on Petroya line. And I believe we've applied for the housing enabling water system funding a few times for the same project. So I'm just wondering if we can stack the two grants together if we are successful.
Go ahead. Your worship. A great question. We did apply for the Hughes Grant, the one you just spelled out there twice, didn't get it twice. There's supposed to be a third round of this grant. It's a provincial one. I think we're getting close to get over that threshold to get that. So hopefully we get that. And this one's the federal one, the CHIF one. There are only 25 municipalities across the whole country that got the CHIF, so it was quite nice that we got that. And we probably won't hear anything till after the federal election because they've gone quiet while the election's on. And the two grants are stackable.
So with that, what is, what's the timeframe for the, what your other grant?
The Hughes, the Hughes, the third round has not been announced yet. They're probably also waiting till after the federal election.
So we have a timeframe that this has to be completed?
This project?
The this grant?
Oh, yeah, this grant. It's like 2031. There's, there's quite a bit of time. However, if this grant and ideally the the Hughes Grant, the provincial grant happened, we'd like to do some construction work this year, if at all possible.
Any other questions? And I do have a second. All those in favor? And a report from the CAO Treasurer dated April 14th, Long Term Debt Analysis. And a mover and a second for that, councillor Clark, councillor Hyatt.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 14th of April, 2025, regarding long term debt analysis as of the end of 2024.
Any questions for treasurer? Mr. Welsh.
We sit well inside our loan repayment schedule still.
Thank you. Through the acting mayor. Yes, it's called the Annual Debt Repayment Limit. Yeah, we're well within.
Any other questions? All those in favor? And we move on to Fire Emergency Management, a report from Rick Cousins, Director of Public Safety, Fire Chief. First quarter report. Mover and a second for that. Councillor O'Hara and councillor Patel.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Public Safety Fire Chief regarding the 2025 first quarterly report of incident responses, inspections, apparatus use and public education events of the Petroyan Northern Skilling Fire Department dated this 14th day of April, 2025.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
I do. Just to let you know, under the incident responses, where for in a skeleton that says one, that is correct, but we did have two more that were wrongfully dispatched to another fire department. And on oil heritage. And then one on Petroya Line in Mandaman, that gas leak. Another department was sent to that. So if they would have been, if they would have dispatched the correct fire department for for our area, then we would have had four calls for in a skeleton.
Those were time consuming calls as well.
Yeah, the the one on Mandaman and Petroya Line was over 20 hours.
Great. Thanks. Councillor Welsh.
Is there a way to include those anomalies in this report? Like perhaps not in the the number for in a skeleton, but as a asterisk at the bottom where it says there were two calls that should have been.
Yep, I can do that the next one if we have. Yep, for sure.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Okay, moves. And moving on to operations, we have a report from the Director of Operations, the acquisition of a one ton dump truck. And a mover and a second to put that on the table. Councillor Welsh and councillor Clark.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Operations dated April 14th, 2025, regarding the acquisition of the one ton dump truck and that the Director of Operations be provided the single use authority to acquire a one ton dump truck as budgeted through sole source purchase.
Okay, any questions or Mr. Thompson, do you want to elaborate at all?
Oh, yeah. Thank you through the chair. Yeah, I've been mulling this over for like some time. I know I was bothering Rick down in Florida about this, but with the uncertainty, you mean, I can't figure out what's going on day to day, hour to hour with with the tariffs and steel and aluminum and auto parts and autos and where they're shipped, where they're made and where they're shipped to. So as the report says, I'm confident, working with CEO Treasurer, the Polk Works Forum and the Clerk that we build a source, sole source, a truck in southwestern Ontario off the lot. I've looked around and I have found three or four that would would be would be good for the town. And as it mentions in the report, it would be under budget. So yeah, that's my ask. So.
Any questions?
Through the chair, I was going to mention, I mentioned to Mike earlier today, on the weekend, I heard actually car dealership advertising, get your on the lot car free auto tariffs. So starting to catch on, Mike, you're ahead of your time here.
My only comment, I think that it's My only comment, I think that it's, it is smart. It's smart to do right now because. Like you said, nobody can figure out what tomorrow's going to bring. And if we can do this with under, under the budget that we have. And you do have a group of people that you're going to work through, so.
I, I do want to stress that we're going to get what we need. You mean, like, it's going to be, it's not going to be. Fancy by any stretch. So it's a one ton dump truck. Four wheel drive, gas or diesel. I've talked at length with the Polk Works Department. It's neither here nor there with that, but you mean, at the end of the day. I'm confident that we can get something. So.
Okay, all those in favor? And that passes. Parks Recreation Facilities, a report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, dated April fourteenth. Road closure requests for June fourteenth. And a mover and a second, Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to endorse the report of the Director of Operate, sorry, the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the road closure requests and that the road listed above the be approved for closure on the dates and times as listed. And that the public notification be issued by the Director of Legislative Services Clerk and Deputy Operations.
Great. Any questions? Is there, all those in favor? That passes. Water and wastewater, report from the Director of Operations, Brights Grove Treatment Plant Intake Replacement, update number two. Award of tender and the mover and a second. Counselor Welsh and Counselor O'Hara.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Operations dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Regarding the Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant Intake Replacement, update number two, award of tender. And that Stonetown Construction Limited of Saint Mary's be awarded the Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant Intake Replacement Project in the amount of fourteen million. One hundred thirty nine thousand, four hundred thirty two dollars and ninety three cents, inclusive of H S T.
That's great. Any questions?
I just want to note here that we've got Stuart and Amanda on standby. Should any members of council have questions for them?
Go ahead, Counselor Welsh.
I do have a question. I'm wondering when it says the apparent lowest bid and the apparent second lowest bid. What, what does that mean apparent? That, that would be for Stuart.
Go ahead, Stuart.
You hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. When we say apparent, that is typically when we have received the bids. But have not gone through the full analysis of the numbers, checking the numbers. So essentially the apparent low bid and the apparent second low bid were based on the. Total tender values read out when the tenders were opened.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Stuart. Counselor Hyatt.
Uh, thank you. My question maybe also be for Stuart, but just a question related to the contingency, like it's both of the contractors. And their bids have provided one million dollar contingency. Was it outlined? In the package that they had to provide one million dollars contingency, saying that they may not be absolute certain in, in their pricing model? Or was the one million dollars left up to the contractor?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, the one million dollar contingency allowance was a number that was built into the tender documents. Provided to the prospective bidders. And that is really just to ensure that we have adequate budget. In case some unforeseen issues arise when we, during construction.
That was, that was built in from the engineering perspective, not from the contractor's perspective?
That is correct.
Thank you. Maybe I just have one general question on the funding. So we've looked at, you know, water funding for two big projects. So. Just in general, you know, will we have to take out loans to support funding these two potential water projects to support? Growth and, and water supply.
Treasure hat. Go ahead.
Where's my glasses? Through you, Chair. No, just, we just did some recent analysis on this for both those key, two key major water. Pro capa projects and based on what we know today, we're in good shape and we wouldn't have to take out any loans for these projects.
Thank you.
That's excluding any new tariff cost or whatever.
And Stonetown did our wastewater treatment plant. And did an excellent job, so.
Through the chair, yeah, Stonetown did our wastewater treatment plant, twenty four million dollar job. And they also did our clear well. I think that was eight or nine million dollars. So every project, we say, this is the biggest project, this is the biggest project, but you mean, and thanks to Amanda and Stuart for all their help. Turns out it's a lot of work putting a pipe out in the lake. It takes a little lot to get things going, to say the least. So. You mean, it's going to be, it's exciting for the town, but also it's going to be something to see, to say the least, getting that pipe out there. So. I'm a little excited, but more nervous, I guess. But, you know, I mean, the stage, you know, what have you, but. Yeah, it's exciting time for the town of Petroya and we're fortunate enough to get the grant. And like I said, I, I can't thank Stuart and Amanda. And the team at SEMA enough for all they've done. And we're looking forward to getting going with Stonetown.
We're going to sell tickets for the production.
Yeah. I was with Tom after he got the announcement, so he was pretty excited as well. So, yeah, go ahead, Counselor O'Hara.
I'm sure this came up before, but I can't remember. What type of pipe are we using? Are we using? Concrete or poly fused pipe or?
Stuart?
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. We, the pipeline that will be installed within the lake will be a high density polyethylene pipe. So black plastic. It's fairly heavy wall, but it's, it provides enough flexibility and durability under those conditions.
Once a plumber, always a plumber, he had to find out about the pipe, so. Yeah, go ahead.
After you, Chair, just going to mention that this new intake will probably last, I think, at least eighty years or current one's about eighty, eighty one years old. So you should be done your term of office by the time. This again.
They'll be writing about it in the history books of Petroya and what they did eighty years ago, so. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Stuart and Amanda for being on. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Second opportunity for Heather to get up.
You should have saved one for each opportunity.
Yeah. Under. New and unfinished business, there is one item, but I'll just open it up first to anyone having anything. No. So I have under new business, currently we have a need. Need item from Mayor Loosely, who sends his regrets again for unable to attend tonight. The mayor would like to present a change in appointment by law. This change would remove Counselor O'Hara. From the St. Clair Conservation Authority, they're going to switch positions and appoint himself Brad Loosely to the. Conservation and we need that to go through council.
Correct. If council agrees, we do need a motion to, to complete that.
By Counselor Clark to move that and seconded by Counselor Hyatt.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to provide direction to the clerk to make a change to the appointment by law to remove Counselor O'Hara as a town represented. Representative to the St. Clair Conserva- St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. And that Mayor Ar Brad Loosely become the appointed town representative to the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority effective immediately.
Great. Thank you for your work there. And Brad's going to go and bang his head now, so. Okay, all those in favor? And that's moves. So the consideration of the bylaws, the first and second reading, the bylaws moved by Counselor Welsh and Counselor Clark.
And that is for bylaw number twelve, thirteen and fourteen of two thousand and twenty five to be read a first and second time.
And all those in favor? Okay, and move to third and final time. Counselor Hyatt and Counselor Patel.
And that is for bylaw number twelve of two thousand twenty five, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petroya. To authorize the execution of a contract for service agreement between Denise Tebow and the Corporation of the Town of Petroya with respect to the provision of downtown. Business liaison services be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number thirteen of two thousand and twenty five. Being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petroya to amend the bylaw forty one of two thousand nineteen. A bylaw for the cleaning and clearing of land and the removal of refuse, commonly known as the tidy yard bylaw, be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number fourteen of two thousand twenty five, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petroya. To confirm the resolutions and motions of the councils of the town of Petroya, which were adopted up to and including April fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor?
I have one question before we go.
Sorry.
How to, how does the information in bylaw thirteen, twenty twenty five get shared with the developers?
Through your worship?
Yeah.
Certainly. So I do have a list of developers that we commonly work with. It's an email. We will circulate this to them to advise. Unfortunately for the other developers, it will be through development agreement, but our, our list of contacts is pretty, pretty solid for our local developers.
Good question. Counselor Welsh.
I just had a comment with respect to the contract for service for Denise Tebow. I noticed that item one point oh three in the contract says. Shall well and faithfully serve the town. And I would just like to say that she absolutely does do that. As for us for years.
Very much so. Been pretty active in assisting some businesses during a hard time for them and. She's, seems to know what every business is and what, what they need and what they could need. So, no, she does a great job. All those in favor? And we need to adjourn. It comes, I can't second it, Counselor Clark and Counselor O'Hara.
And that is for the council, for the January, the January, my goodness, the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Meeting of the Council of the Town of Petroya be adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting of council to be held on Monday, May the twelfth at two thousand twenty five. Or to the call the chair.
All those in favor? And that passes. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Okay, so it's evident I need to bring my glasses.